Okay, six o'clock. Call me to order. We're saying we have a city council joint regular committee meeting Thursday, January nine, 2020. Call the order at six P. M. Members present, myself, Kevin Myers, James Meadie, Bruce Truka is absent.
He's about to walk in.
He's coming.
He's running his quarter.
All right, Bruce Truka, Candace Yokum, Doug Foote, and also. City Joint Regular Committee Meeting was called to order by myself at six P. M. Any public participation? All right, order of committee business.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just a remark at this point, everybody has in their packets, because this is not updated yet on the board, that should be ready in about two weeks. Everyone has the committee's duties and committee assignments for 2020 and 21. You'll notice on this sheet, you've got two sheets, but on this sheet it mentions the chair of each committee. The second name, I am assuming to be your second, if that is not the case, if you want somebody else as your second, other than the one that's marked here, let the current council president or you know, so we can have that designated, you can have that discussion now, or you can think about it over the next two weeks, but we just need to confirm that these names that are listed second are indeed your second chairs for this.
Okay. All right. With that information, I'll call Finance Committee to order at six A. One. Appropriations. And has everybody got a copy of where the money is going and each of the amounts that's on the appropriations that Joyce is requesting? So, Joyce.
Ball's in my court, is that what you said?
That ball's in your court.
Okay. We had a little blitch between what we talked about in the budget and what actually got there in sewage disposal. It's kind of a combination of things that was happening. There were a couple of numbers we were waiting on, it got discussed in committee. I was having issues with the new computer system, nature problems, and I think we just missed some of these things that we talked about. So, does everyone have this breakdown sheet?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, in contractual services for sewage disposal, this is for the actual running of the plant out off the southern. The expenses that need to be covered in their outside contracts is the compost site, which is grinding all the stuff that people bring out, we do that once a year. All those limbs and trubs and everything else gets ground into mulch, basically, that residents can come out and get and spread, you know, in their landscaping or on a path around their house, whatever they want to do with it. We also have the sludge byproduct that comes out of the plant that has to be heated and pressed and, you know, whatever, that has to be pulled away. And that's rather expensive, that costs, that contract is around fifty-five thousand dollars. Then, Outway does, that's an outside company that does testing, Tim, can you explain that a little more, what they do?
All our EPA testing, or not all of them, we do some in-house, and some are set out.
Okay, and that's seventeen thousand dollars. Then, since Tim is the only person with the class three license out there, and he needs to take vacations occasionally, or, you know, have some time off, we allow four thousand dollars for times that he's not there for our former plant superintendent, Terry Spiegel, to come in and cover for him. And so, that needs to be covered. Then, if you've been out to the compost site recently, you've noticed that the road isn't in the best shape.
Oh.
And sometimes you could almost break an axle going out there, I think, but anyway, that road needs to be repaved, that is not a dedicated street, so it cannot be paid out of street funds, that will have to come out of the sewage disposal fund to cover then. And we're estimating that at sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. So, that's a total of a hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars, and unfortunately, there's only twenty-one thousand dollars in that line right now.
Well, that's no.
Yeah, that's not nearly enough. So, we are requesting eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars to be added to that outside contracts line in the budget. Then, under capital outlay, we had discussed multiple things that need to be done. The first thing is the U. V. system, and Tim can explain that to you probably more than I could, but it's like a final step for the water before it goes into the river.
We used to chlorinate, but now it's ultraviolet light, which kind of neuters the bacteria, and it's a final step, yes. And our system is, I think, there's no parts, they don't supply parts for it anymore, and it's over, I think it's close to thirty years.
Yeah, so that definitely needs to be replaced. We're thinking that that's going to be probably close to two hundred thousand dollars. We had budgeted a hundred and forty thousand in this line, and then we also have a sewage replacement fund that we put money into each year, we budgeted another sixty in that particular fund, so it wasn't all hitting sewage disposal to cover that system. And unfortunately, that was the only thing that made it in there. We also need a new power unit, which I'm not sure what that's.
It's a hydraulic unit, or portable running pump, that we can take it up from tank to tank.
And a flow meter.
We have two flow meters that need replaced, yes, they're longer than me, I've been here twenty years, they're twenty-five years probably.
And then, we put in funds for a pump, because many times we have to replace the pump here or near, or at least get it rebuilt or something. Also, we were to budget for a new truck. How old is the truck you have?
We have two trucks that I wanted to replace with one, and they're both, I think, like two thousand and two maybe, but they are, for some reason, they're really rusty.
Okay, so that's an additional thirty-five thousand. So, we need two hundred and four thousand one hundred dollars in capital outlay, we've got a hundred and forty thousand already there, so we're asking for an additional sixty-four thousand one hundred dollars. And this is because we were already getting purchase orders in place, and things are already happening, we need to get the in-package out for the U. V. system, so we can get that rolling, you know, this would be considered an emergency, that we need to get this in place.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. Joyce, I'm looking at the trial balance, I see what last year's carryovers on this new format, where will I find what our projected carryover, what are projected, what we have not accounted for right now would be? Is that all the balance?
Okay, right now, the unaccounted for, you know, estimated carryover is over seven hundred thousand dollars.
Where's that at on here, is that?
That's not.
It's not on here.
Not here, no, no, but I can give you something.
I'm just, what I'm looking at, you know, seeing that there's eighty-two, five, and sixty-four, one, I just want to know where that's, you know, where that leaves us.
Right, that's in the carryover, and it's, it should be absolutely fine, it should have been in there to start with, and like I say, we had a whole, like a domino effect of miscommunications or no communication, it's not anybody's fault, it just happened, so.
So, we have over half a million dollars left over to carryover.
Yes.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Bruce? Okay, can I entertain a motion?
Sue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passed. Okay, if nothing else, I will adjourn Finance at six P. M.
All right, I will call Economic Development to order at six ten P. M. We have up subcommittee appointments. You'll see the list of all the different subcommittees that we have, and those that are almost in those spots right now with their presenting in the last year. Fire number Todd, do we?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to this. There are quite a few appointments we need to make, we can either reappoint the existing members who have been reelected, or we can, in some cases, the members, well, all of them are out, but sometime, in some cases, the members have not been reelected, we need to find some new people. We need legislation for three of these, the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is also the, the Board of Building Standards and Appeals, which is a B. B. S. A., it's a separate organization, it's the same members, it's the same terms, we need legislation for both of those appointments, this can all be in one piece.
Yeah.
Or resolution. We also need legislation for the appointment to the ambulance board. All the rest of these do not require legislation, and the notes are pretty self-explanatory. After you get past the first four pages, you'll notice we have a new board this year, the C. I. C., the City Committee and Group of Corporation, that is, as far as the council's concerned, the President of Council and the Chair of Economic Development, which would be Mr. Phillips, need to be appointed to that. What else do we have here? The, oh, going back to the B. Z. A. and the B. B. S. A., we also have another appointment besides the Plating Chair, which is again, Mr. McKeever. Perry Lipscomb has expressed interest in the mail, the two boards, so when we request legislation, it will be to appoint the Plating Chair, we appoint the Plating Chair and we appoint Mr. Lipscomb as well. So, that's what we need as far as legislation is concerned, just those three boards. Regarding these other subcommittees, most of these are, and the members here who all these boards can speak to this, but the Health District, the first one up here, the Crawford County General Health District, Mr. Wirebaugh was on that board, I spoke to him again about this today. This requires a large commitment of time, this board meets ten times a month by law, which is more or less monthly, they don't meet during the county fair season, and then they meet once a member of the center. It's at four-thirty in the afternoon on Wednesdays, it's at the Health Department, and those meetings can go two hours or more, they usually are about an hour and a half, so that is a time commitment of some significance. The rest of these are rather short, Kevin Myers can speak to the ambulance board and what they require from us. The County Park District, right now, that is Bruce Truka and Dave Keptie, I spoke to the police chief, Dave Keptie does not want to be reappointed, he doesn't have the time for this, it's at seven in the morning, I think it's on Wednesday, I'm not sure.
It's on Thursday, Marry, it's usually two hours.
So, that's a long day. Yeah, so we need to appoint somebody else to replace Dave Keptie on that. My other question, this is really for the Law Director, the County C. I. C., is that still ongoing concern?
It is, we continue to use it.
Yeah, okay, so we need to appoint him for that. Some of the other boards, the volunteer firefighters, Mr. McKeever can speak to that, maybe very soon, they've done it all last year, I don't know what they do.
Never got those applied?
Right. Those are the appointments that need to be made, and you can go open one by one and decide who wants to open it.
All right, well, is there anybody that would like to be, would like to be on the County Health District? Do you want to volunteer for that one? Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? If Mr. Wirebaugh is on until 2022, did he ask to get off?
Well, he's not a councilman anymore, he can't be our city representative if he's not a city representative anymore.
Okay. I just didn't read whether that was required in here.
Yeah, well, yeah, it has to be someone from the council.
Okay. Okay, then the next question I've got is E. Phyllis Kroll.
That is something that's been carried over from, I believe that's another one of our appointments, I need to talk to the Health Department to see, well, I need to get an updated list of all their appointees.
Okay.
But that's not something we need to address tonight, we just need to have our council authority, our council appointee, doesn't have to be tonight, but it, that's something we need to get done, is to have someone to call for, proper council.
Mr. Foote. The, the only real pressing one of these that needs to be done tonight is the zoning appeals board, because they're waiting on us to appoint somebody, or to make these two appointments, because they have a couple.
They have several meetings.
Several meetings they're waiting on, so the, the rest of this, we don't have to decide tonight.
I'll be glad to stay on as the B. B. S. A.
All right, we'll take care of that. And Perry Lipscomb as well, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Fielder.
Bill Stoker, two zero five North Spring Street, I just wanted to add here that I'm a B. Z. A. member, and Perry Lipscomb and Rick McKeever have invaluable assets on our board, and I would definitely recommend a reappointment.
I can second that, so I'm considering through several meetings.
Do I have a motion to request legislation? I have a first.
First.
Your second, and then?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, there we go. What's up?
I'm just wondering, because it also requires legislation, it hasn't been done tonight, as Mr. Frank Hauser said, we're mostly concerned with the B. B. Z. A. tonight.
You want to get the other one out of the way?
The Health, the ambulance board does require legislation, that is not our board, they may meet without anybody representative from the city, so be it, but we will require legislation to appoint or reappoint someone to the ambulance system. That can be done as this piece, or it can be done as a separate piece.
Do I have a motion to, I assume you still want to sit on the ambulance board?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion for Mr. Myers to stay on the ambulance board?
Mr. Foote, I'd, I'd also requested that I be considered for that board.
Okay.
Reason for that is there is some very important stuff going to be happening this year with the ambulance board, the EMS stuff, and I had talked to the, some of the members on that board, and they had expressed interest that they would like me to be the representative, the representative of the city on that board.
We got two nominations on the floor, somebody want to make a motion for one of the two? You made a motion for Kevin. Do I have a second for Kevin? From this committee? Mr. Chairman, can I, can you have two members on the board?
What the townships do is they, in their legislation, they can appoint a second member to replace, and we've never done it that way, it's not said we couldn't.
So, any problem with doing that?
We would still get one.
If it's an important year, maybe, you know, it would be a good idea to have a couple places, would you object to that?
I don't, we would still get one vote, yeah.
All right, there's a nomination on the floor for both Kevin and Kurt, do I have a motion for that?
I say a motion.
You can do that, Lisa's made a motion, somebody want to second that?
Second.
You unfortunately cannot do that.
Paul, sorry.
Yeah, you're on it.
Second.
You'll second?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so all those in favor of Kevin Myers and Kurt Frankhauser being our appointed representatives, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, since we don't have to take care of the rest, we give everybody some time to think over it, looks like the one that we really need to think about, that's going to be this General Health District, because as I mentioned, that sounded like critics going off in this one, so.
I have a question. I don't see where they say in here, like, I don't mean it's time dirty, okay, I do, I was going to say this.
That's all right. So, does anybody have anything else?
I guess my only question is, none of the rest of these require legislation, but they still require approval from this committee.
Right, yes.
So, we're just going to hold off until the next two weeks, and then come back and revisit it.
Yeah, that way everybody gets some time to think, especially the spots that are open, some of the new members, if you want to take a look at those spots, those might be a committee that you might want to sit on, that that's an open spot. If not, at least, you know, look at some of the other ones, and maybe you want to be appointed to a different committee, and somebody can switch, so that gives us some time to think, so if that's all, I will.
Mr. Chairman, just to, just to add that even though the other subcommittee don't require legislation, they all will go for the full council for them.
Okay, all right, I'm going to recess this, so you better speak now. Recession's six twenty-one.
That's the, the committee that we're here. Oh. No, it doesn't exist yet, the only thing we need to do tonight is ask the four members who would like to volunteer to be on this committee, and we can go about settling, but that is a committee.
Who wants to be on the floor, have you come on?
Can I be on this? That's okay.
No, because this committee is on the committee.
We've got Kevin volunteering, I'll ask Mr. McKeever, Candy. Come on, please.
Who wants?
You know you want.
Sure.
Pause this. Remember, you can always know.
Yes. I think that would be best of all for us.
Mr. President.
Yes. Do you want us to look at our calendars and set a date now, so that we can have that soon?
It's up to, well, the rules of procedure are something that we do with every new term, the last time we did this, I don't think we did it well into the calendar year, so it's not, it's something that's up to us, it doesn't require legislation. My only observation would be that if, at the time when we did it two years ago, it was a special meeting, I think we did it in the middle of the afternoon, Law Director was here and sent in.
Yeah, sat right there.
Right.
I would do it sooner than later, I mean, I think it makes sense to get it out of the way.
Well, we, I think we have more than one meeting, too, I think we have two, we can have one, we can have seven.
We can try with one.
Right, and you can also, if you could do it during a regular Joint Regular Committee meeting, as part of that, in which case, we're all here anyway, but that's up to the H. A. H. committee.
Should do it in two weeks.
Well, then that way it's here.
I'd like to know if it's scheduled.
So, it would be the twenty-first.
The twenty-third. It's just added on the regular agenda.
Yeah.
And you'll notice in the packet that you have materials, you have the existing rules of procedure, and everything in our kind of adwords is related to the council and what we do, so take a look at that.
Doesn't that have to be advertised separately, though?
No, it's going to be referred to the committee, it's, when we have regularly scheduled meetings, any copy is available for discussion, so it only has to be advertised as a special meeting.
But it doesn't.
It's a special meeting, it's not part of the day, so it would be advertised as part of the day, part of the day, it would be advertised as a regular meeting.
When that, okay, when that goes.
Moving on to service, you ready, Bruce?
Okay, all right, what time did we?
Six twenty-five.
Six twenty-five. All right, I'll go ahead and call the service committee to order at six twenty-five P. M. So, recycling, right?
I brought that up.
And it was already, it was in?
It's in committee.
I think it's in committee. Well, now I'm not playing my, my chitchat here.
I've had a few people approach me about the recycling.
Is it on B. B. N. L.?
Well.
One that sits behind the police department.
Just a meeting, it would be one we want to refer recycling, and if you don't say it in there, just refer recycling, so we can discuss it and help with that.
Well, this is a regular meeting, any copy is available for discussion in regular meetings in our committee, if it's, if you thought it was on due to this, and it's not, it doesn't matter, because it's a regular meeting, it's discussed.
She reverted it at the council meeting, so.
I did, just in case it wasn't there.
Yeah, but even so, it's a regular meeting, you're allowed to discuss it.
Okay, we're good, we're good.
All right, well, I guess I'll leave it, I mean, tell me.
Well, I just wondered if, if or who has the recycling unit that sits behind a police department, seems to be always full, there's things piled up around it, it looks nasty, and people are frustrated because they make several trips waiting for it to be emptied out, so that they can put their recycling in it, and I wondered if there was any way we could actually get another one, or maybe look into something different as far as having recycling containers at each home, or?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Would it be prudent that maybe we ask Mr. Rockwell to come in in two weeks at our next meeting, and we can open it and have a discussion back and forth with him, and share all the concerns we have, and let him tell us why things are the way they are, what he can and can't change, it would be.
That's great, very nice.
Could I give the point of my secrets, Quality Inn and Suites has one, too, which I recently found out.
Yes.
Well, Quality Inn and Suites, sometime out there, there is a recycling bin, too, I just.
Where is that?
It's in the parking lot there.
I think that's.
I'm giving you my secret, that one's always, that one's always empty.
John Rockwell's in place.
Yeah.
I think that was the one that said by John Rockwell.
But I do think it's a discussion we definitely need to have, recycling.
Mr. Chairman, I was talking to Commissioner Whitey's an hour today, if I understood it right, those are going to be taken, all taken out, they're going to go to one larger bin, everything is going to get dumped into one larger bin, and then the company's going to come in and take it, or we're going to deliver it, yeah, to a place, and then they're going to sort it, so those are shortened up now, I'm not sure exactly, sure of the timeframe on that, but.
How, how often will they be emptying it?
That's, it's all done by the county, I don't know, I don't know. So, that's, so Brian can answer this question.
All that stuff's on their Facebook page, I follow them, they actually dump those multiple times a week, and people shove a bunch of stuff that doesn't belong in there, that's why they pulled the one out of the old.
Tech Teds.
Tech Teds lot, because it was being abused and misused, they dump them on a schedule, they actually post when they're going to be there and when they're going to move them, so it is checking this one.
I've heard that, what the mayor said, though, about the going to, because they've been doing it in other areas, too, where they just put one bin, and then basically the truck comes in, picks it up, takes it right to the sort facility, and it kind of takes the human sort part out of it, which is a lot of the problem that I believe we have out here, is.
Trying to figure out what's number two plastic.
Well, that, whether or not it's able, if it's contaminated or not contaminated, because apparently there's issues with contamination with recycling, too, and things of that nature, so.
Yeah, well, I think Mr. Rockwell could probably provide a lot of insight to this.
Todd, Paul Brian, come in.
I know that Upper Sandusky does individual cans at.
Each house.
At each home, so I don't know if that's something.
Maybe that's something Brian, too.
We looked at that in the past, it's going to be, back when, when price of commodities was higher, it was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars cost to the city, now that the prices have collapsed, I mean, I would think, I know City of Marion discontinued theirs about a year ago.
Yeah, they had to pay Sim Brothers, like, almost fifty thousand dollars, I think it was about a year ago, considering recycling.
We can do it, but it's, the cost is going to be borne by the consumer, by everybody, so I would, I would think it'd be roughly about add ten dollars a month to a person's utility bill, I'm not sure that would be an acceptable thing to the customer, but we, you know, because what we take in, we have to dispose of, nobody wants recycling anymore.
Right, so are these people that are putting these hoppers in, are they not, are they charging us?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, there's cost to, there's going to be a cost to removing. I, I, yeah, there's cost to, there's gonna be a cost to removing.
We're the ones that are there now that we don't pay anything for.
There, there's, that's county, but there is a cost, you know, so, the, Doug was telling me today that the plastics that they used to pick up free now, they charge for, so everything, I'm assuming, as we go in the future, you know, it's gonna cost us to remove. So recycling is a very good idea, and, you know, we try to do as much as we can, but it's a very expensive thing.
Right, so the, the, the containers that we have located, or that isn't a cost to us, though, right now?
No, no.
Okay.
Those are all county.
Oh, it is a cost to us. It is a cost to us, but not... Not a direct cost. We pay how we have, we spoke.
All right, well, let's just go ahead, and we'll get Brian in here, and he can explain everything to us, and then we'll go from that way. All right, I'm ready to recess, so there's still...
Okay. Uh, the Cyrus City Joint Regular Committee Meeting, oh, not booked that, sorry, the Public Lands and Buildings Committee Meeting is called to order at six thirty-one. And, I think this is up on the agenda, is trash receptacles in city parking lots. It'd be nice to, I asked for a meeting, and we're like, Thomas?
I believe it was Mr. Wireball brought this up on his way out, wasn't he?
Yeah. Okay, Bruce. You can open the floor up to Bruce, please.
Yes, please.
Uh, no, I went ahead and had referred at this last council meeting, fresh dumpsters in city parking lots. Uh, we're taking the initiative now to actually repair the parking lot behind Crazy Fox and the old, uh, Mad, Mad Wolf, yeah. And I guess what my beef is a little bit, well, it is, it's terrible. They have dumpsters sitting in the parking lots, taking up valuable parking places in the lots, and they, I have, I took pictures tonight. There's two dumpsters that are dedicated to strictly grease, and there's no covering on top of this, it's wide open grease. And then there's a couple other dumpsters that, I'll, I'll just, why don't I just pass them around? There's a pickup truck in the parking lot with, full of tires, and a flat tire backed into a parking lot. Uh, there's a two-wheel trailer with, like, wooden sides on it, and it's chained to a telephone pole, and the trailer has been there so long that there's approximately a four-inch rust stain, the full length of the chain on the concrete goes around the pole and back to the trailer. And I guess what my real problem is, yet on top of it, is they're not even using U.S.A.R. city dumpsters, they're outside dumpsters of someone else. I, you know, I, I just, seems like there ought to be a way, either charge the people to put the dumpsters there, or tighten our, our ordinance up that, hey, if you're gonna put a dumpster in our lot, you have to use U.S.A.R. city dumpsters. And then I went and I spoke to a man that worked for Bill Combs when it was Mad Bull, and he stated to me that Bill was shrewd, he didn't wanna use any parking spaces of his behind the Mad Bull, he always used metal trash cans. And they lined the whole back of the Mad Bull with metal trash cans, with metal lids that were attached to the trash can itself, and he said if there was an overflow, they also would run trash cans down the walkway between the Mad Bull and the Crazy Fox. It, it just seems like if we're going to make the initiative to actually do something and clean this place up, I, I believe that we need to do something to alleviate a lot of this mess. That's, I narrate that, person, I'm sorry.
I agree with you, Bruce, we need to do something because they're using the space that the city is paying for, we're maintaining it, and we're gonna update the parking lots, and we don't, and it's, it's an eyesore. Either they have to designate a certain spot that is fenced in, and they have to use, since it's on city property, they have to use city dumpsters. I don't see why, you know...
Probably think there would be a better place to locate the dumpsters, too.
Well, I don't know where else you're gonna locate them.
Well, well, here, if it's a city-owned dumpster, a city-owned lot, then if they're paying us for that service at that point, then do we fence those dumpsters in, in those special lots where our dumpsters that are ours, that they're renting to the city?
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying if, if we're gonna do it, and they're gonna have on our property, then we're gonna designate a certain area, and that they have to, they have to use city services in order to do it, and that's my opinion.
Go ahead.
I'll add to it. Um, there's a, there's a parking lot to the north that, that currently, I'm not real sure what the arrangement is with the property owner to the north, but SCAT parks their, all their buses there in that parking lot. Maybe, maybe these people that have these private lots would be interested in renting a spot to these businesses. It's only a matter of another fifty feet from ours, from, with our parking lot to a private lot, you know, maybe they would be interested, and that way, it frees our parking lot up to actually park cars there, and it would be a benefit to these other people that own this private lot, maybe it'd be a money-making operation for them.
So you said this was cooking oil, or?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's actually two dumpsters that are to cooking, well, and then I went down to Main Moon. Main Moon actually uses plastic containers with screw-off lids. I didn't see any containers of anything, like, for Wendy's or McDonald's, they, they must have all theirs contained.
Wendy's, Hardee's, and McDonald's, and well, have theirs.
Hardee's does, yeah, and there is a fence now, and they're all...
So, I mean, they do it right on their premises.
Yes.
Yep.
They contain it, you know, here are these big dumpsters with open oil, just sitting on city lot.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I wonder if, if there was an oil spill on the city lot, are we responsible for contamination?
Are we?
Do you approve who the owner of it is, that I can show to them?
Have we talked to any of the business owners, have anybody approached them yet, you know, I mean, and speaking, whatever?
This has been one of those topics that comes up often.
It comes up often.
Yeah.
So they're aware?
They have...
No, not really, they're just, they're just, they're doing it.
Because it's been past practice, and so it's always changed it on, too, so, done.
Well, at the next meeting, you're already gonna have Brian here, he's the Crazy Fox owner now.
Oh!
So just, he'll already be here, and then invite Sean Ridgeway, and then, and then maybe invite Whip from the horseshoe. He, now, I know he doesn't do food, but he's a big advocate for recycling, and he hardly ever has, he brags about how his dumpster, how often it's dumped, because isn't how much, yeah, and his cardboard, of course, he doesn't have food, though, the other two places cook food, which makes a big difference in how much, right? But you're already gonna have Brian here, so why not have Sean come, and then, you know, you can sort it out?
No, and this, this is only this parking lot, you know, it's, there's, there's another parking lot involved, but I think this one, it's, whatever we do in this parking lot would set precedence for the rest of the parking lots, but, you know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, are, are, the, the parking lot that Bruce is referring to, is that in negotiation, Jeff?
No, no, we, we have talked to them, they're, they're, they won't be interested in purchasing that lot sometime in the very near future. But, you know, the legality, we, I'm not sure how we go about doing that, we haven't really discussed it, so...
Well, un- until they actually purchase that, do they not need to remove those signs that they have posted there? Because they posted three more signs at the east end of the parking lot, that states that nobody can park there except through drive-through, or they're, they have their delivery.
Well, and it's gone back years, so we've let them...
No, those weren't, they added those.
I'm not talking about the three, I'm talking about the signs, the delivery pickup, and those have, you know, they've gone through five or six councils, and I know it's been brought up a couple times, but, you know, you also balance that with the fact that, you know, it is an issue, we know it's an issue, but they are significant employers, too, and not only that, they bring a lot of people into town from outside of town, bring the much-needed tax dollars, tax revenue here, so that's always been kind of where it's kinda died in the, in the past, and we're certainly not, whatever you wanna do, you, we're gonna leave it up to you guys, you know, whatever you wanna do, if you want to make, I'm not sure legally if we can, that would be a Mr. Rappel question, if we can require them to rent our dumpster, or if not, then do you require them to rent a space in the parking lot, you know, and or both, you know, that's something the council has to decide, so...
Well, cities, they're using city services by putting their dumpster in our parking lot, and they're not only using it for two hours, they're using it for twenty-four hours, seven days a week.
Yeah, I don't know how long they've been doing that, probably ten, fifteen years, or maybe longer than that, or twenty years, it's, yeah, well, so... So then you have the, then you have the legal issue, if we haven't shown ownership of that place, do we, do we actually own it now?
One other question, does anybody know, I, I think they, the business we're talking about moved their dumpsters onto their property, did they not?
Remember, they moved them across to their, yeah.
I think so, they did open up, they did take them off the city-owned property.
That, that parking lot is this different animal, we, you know, that could, we could sell that tomorrow, you know, I wish we would. Well, let's, let's refer to council next meeting, and...
We were waiting on a broker's price opinion.
Right.
I think we had, we did, I thought, I thought it was loaded down, but we didn't want to sell it, council voted to not sell.
I don't recall, I don't recall that. I think that's the last thing, I remember, is we were waiting on a price opinion to make offer, to negotiate.
Yeah, I think Mr. Rappel is right, I think, I think the lead counsel was, you know, was against selling it, I don't remember that right. But we can, we can, you know, we can develop a plan on that, have Mr. Baker come and, you know, talk about it, too, so, about their plans, I know they're, they would like to do some expansion, and it's, it's a big help for the community, if people come in.
I do believe the mayor is correct on that, we did discuss something about the sale of it, if I'm not mistaken, and it, it chopped out. I, I, you are correct on that, I do remember, because I remember several votes, and I was in favor, but it didn't go through.
Well, if we do, since you brought it up, can we, can we continue to discuss this?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, since it's, yeah, since it's been brought up, you know, there, there's a place where we can, you know, get some revenue as well as help a local business out, so, it would be, you know, I think a win-win, I think.
We can use that revenue to fix the other lots that we can't use street fund money more.
And Mr. Mayor is exactly right, yeah.
Or that road that goes back to the...
Yeah, well, so if you, if you would like, we can start up that negotiations again and see how we're gonna go about doing that, we can, maybe in a couple weeks, present that at a committee meeting.
I, I'm in favor of negotiation with the administration, with the business.
I'm sorry, this is my first time leaving a committee on this, I, I don't appreciate that.
No, Minister should bring something back to you.
Okay.
No, that would be probably next council meeting, but...
So that's a resolution to one of the parking lot issues, I take your sole concern about number three, and...
Right, just because, just because we're allowed to go open, doesn't mean that we can't shut, just go, and do something to clean our act up, I mean, it's...
Mr. Trump, just, I don't know, it, since this is a city-owned lot, Mr. Trico mentioned a trailer that has been parked so long that it's rusted. Aren't there time limits posted? I know any other spot says you can only park your Fraxma time, why not just tow it? Get it out of there.
What, what lot is it?
Cut the chain, I'm trying to, I'll do it myself. I mean, that's just something to consider, if, if we own the lot, and make it go away.
Like, like, um, would that be an option to go ahead and invite the business owners, revive lot three, two for the next service committee meeting, and get their input on it?
Oh, they're great, great at that.
Extend an olive branch, which they wanna do, and be the one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes.
It might be added pages, too, even though I don't think they're doing anything violation, but while we have the business owners, the American Legion buts up to the city over on Long Street, invite a representative from there.
I agree.
Mr. Price. Brands.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the purpose.
Yeah.
Okay, bye, Chris.
Okay, okay. So we can get her, hello, man, okay, I should be able to get everybody invited to that meeting. On stuff, oh, thank you, huh?
I wanted to give it to you.
Okay. Does anybody have anything further on the discussion on the trash receptacles in city parking lots?
I have one question. We don't have anything like that behind a white picket, do we?
I don't think there's anything in that lot that's...
Just hard, yeah.
At Wendy's is just, is, it's kind of pretty long, and just...
There is a dumpster that sits, you know, on our spot, on our property, down over the wall, you go around the corner.
Well, you gotta fence it, it's a fenced in right there, isn't it?
No, they have one upon their property, and there's one that sits down on the city lot.
Is it theirs? Whose is it?
Well, I think, if I remember right, I think it's the recyclable one, so I don't know if that's the county's, or if they pay another company, I, I can't tell you off the top of my head. We can all find out when we go home tonight, right? There is, it sits down over the wall.
Okay, Chairman, just, just to be clear, for us to come back in two weeks, we're gonna be talking about the lot next to Baker's, and then, are you, are you thinking that we're gonna be having a proposal for the dumpsters in the other lots, or is that something you guys are ready?
That's conversation.
Yeah, I believe it's conversation, yes.
So we'll have the one proposal then, and we got you.
One proposal and conversation. Anything else for the Public Lands and Buildings Committee? I would like to adjourn at recess, sorry, recess at six forty-eight, six forty-eight.
Are you getting shot for it?
Is there any public participation today? Yes, Jenny?
I just have a question, Jenny, from the five fifteen mile street. Unfortunately, Mrs. Schiffer left, and I had a question for her, regarding the carryover that you guys were discussing in the first part of the finance committee, was that carryover revenue or expenses?
Carryovers are always revenue, I think, aren't they, by definition?
Okay, so that's where, that's from where the appropriation, the emergency appropriations are gonna be coming from?
I don't have fun with it. Well, and then revenue this year, too.
Well, I hear revenue this year too.
Okay, thank you.
Is there another participation?
Hello, Chairman? Just one point for everyone, council just reminded that we have a public hearing at six P.M. on Monday regarding the reset on, uh, Uspansville Street, or county storage units.
And, uh, one other thing, you, let the new councilor know what that issue was last year with the.
Yeah, and it's, it's something that's in committee, uh, at this point, but, uh, last year, the state of Ohio, uh, passed a law that invalidates all local, uh, ordinances with respect to firearms, uh, such as saying you're not allowed to shoot a gun in the backyard, and a number of other things, um, there was some legal challenges to that, so we haven't really done anything because of the legal challenges out there, uh, those were dismissed just earlier this week, yeah, two days ago, so we're going to have to review our local gun ordinances, um, and see what's, what's valid, what's not, um, but, you're.
Yeah, but that, it's in committee.
It's in committee already. We're just going to have to take a look at our, yeah, we're just going to have to take a look at our local ordinances to see what, what things, uh, apply, the, the importance of it is that the provision, uh, well drafted by whatever lobbyist drafted it, uh, included, uh, an option to allow somebody who is deprived of their ability to exercise their second amendment rights within the city limits, to sue the city who so deprived them, and recover not only damages, but attorney's fees, so you'll have attorneys shouting up pieces around just to, you know, gym up fees.
Quick question, uh, will that pertain to firearms only, or will that pertain to fireworks as well as firearms?
Firearms only, is my, is my view, firearms and.
You say that is in health and safety now?
It is.
Would we be permitted to convene a health and safety meeting to discuss that, if it wasn't advertised, since it's an open product?
Yeah, you can discuss anything, it's okay.
Do we need to convene health and safety, have a discussion?
I don't think we're prepared to.
Well, what I'd be going to ask is if you are to the point that you would be able to prepare sample or draft legislation of what you believe are appropriate steps, would be to mitigate the potential for lawsuit?
And we'll probably have that by the top, the next, the next committee meeting, because we're going to have to start taking.
Put that on our, put that on our agenda for next time?
Yeah, and we'll have to go through our, we'll have to go through our city code, we have, we have various firearm and hunting restrictions, uh, in various places in our code that, that deals with other things, you know, you can't deer hunt on, on the square kind of thing, um, but, uh, so those are all things going to have to be dealt with and looked at, and there are various parts of our code, so it's going to probably, it may end up being multiple.
So I can hunt a deer on Cherry Lane, we were there last week?
I know, like part of the state, possibly, uh, there's still restrictions, I mean, you know, you can't be, you can't.
Shoot across the street.
Shoot across the street, shoot across the.
Or probably.
Yeah, probably, you can walk across your vehicles, and, you know, just, you know, it's a compromise, it's a bit of a lot of way, but, so, we'll take a look at it, and we'll brief it in the next committee meeting.
Uh, any other participation? Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn, I'll have this down next meeting, sorry.
I'll make a motion, subject.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Got a motion, uh, we are adjourned.
I need to sit with Mr. Song and Mr. McKeever.
I'm not saying that, that's you.